In order. We have a couple of public hearings scheduled. One at seven o'clock, which we're a couple of minutes late on. For the application for a special use permit by the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant for a gift shop building to be installed on the property at 6492 Main Road. Tax map number 10-2-74.2. The... Can I read the notice? Is that official or what? It's kind of a lawsuit if we have a public hearing. Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Stafford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. at Stafford Town Hall, 8903 Route 237, Stafford, New York, to discuss the application of the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant for an amendment to their special use permit for a gift shop building on premises. This is an enlargement of an existing non-conforming use in accordance with zoning code, Section 182-14, Paragraph C, for non-conforming uses. Said Planning Board will convene, seeing at the time stated above, to hear from all persons in connection with such matters. Order of the Stafford Planning Board, William Vannell, Chairman. Okay. Do you know? Copies of this on?
I don't. I can't really... You don't understand.
Okay. We do have some recently adopted rules for public hearings. Basically, if you're interested in addressing the board or speaking, you should indicate so on the sign-in sheet, since this is just a new thing. I don't know that that's happened, but we'll have to update the sign-in sheet to indicate that. Any person wishing to speak at a meeting or a public hearing will have three minutes in which to do so. The supervisor or chair may allow a speaker to continue if time permits. Speaker will be asked to stand up and identify or state his or her full name and address before asking questions or making any comments or statements. Speaker should speak slowly, deliberately, and be as brief as possible. Speaker addressing the board shall address his or her remarks to the board only, not to other members of the audience. All questions, comments, and/or statements will be directed to the board as a whole, not to any individual member. The board is not obligated to respond to public comments. Any person wishing to submit a written statement to be read into the record shall provide said statement to the supervisor or chair at the beginning of the meeting. If you have a written statement, since this is something new, if you do have a written statement that you don't have prepared, we can extend the public hearing for a week or two in order to get have allow enough time for you to submit that. Use of handheld sound or video recording devices by the public is allowed unless the recording devices or their use interrupt or interfere with the orderly conduct of the meeting or with the ability of the public to hear or see the proceedings. Speaker should realize that speaking about items on the agenda and making public comment at board meetings is a privilege, not a right. Those who attend such meetings and decide to freely speak out and voice their opinion should realize their comments or remarks are being made in a public forum. Anyways, that in a nutshell is what we're going to go by tonight. So, the public hearing that is in front of us right now is for the special use permit for Red Oger Landmark Restaurant.
May I ask if you have copies of tonight's agenda so that those of us who were not able to download it off the website can follow?
Now, do we have copies?
I didn't make that change.
Have a copy of the rules? Pardon me?
There's copies of those rules. Very good. Yes, there's copies of those new rules.
Oh. Okay. So... Is anybody here to speak on the application for the special use permit by the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant?
I am. Alrighty. I'm Steve. I own the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant along with Tim. I do want to make one thing perfectly clear to the board because our resident nuisance, which we all know who it is, has been posting things online saying that we're getting special permission and whatnot. So, just so everybody in this room is aware of, we did come to the town. We went to the zoning officer. They simply said we had to get a zoning permit, which we did. We paid for it. They said alls we had to do was move the shed and it would be good to go. So, that is what we did. We opened the shed. All of a sudden, two weeks after the shed was opened, and it is a shed, it's a gift shop, but it is a shed, we were told that additional steps had to be made. I am not okay with the resident nuisance writing things via Stafford, myself, my business, when they do not have the correct facts and information. That's what I have. I also feel like if you're going to downplay the citizens in this community or myself or a business, you have two options. You can run for a position here, which has proven that nobody wanted her on here, or move. That's simply what I got to say.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that is here to speak for or against the application for the special use permit? I have a question. Okay. Hearing none, I guess we will officially close the public hearing. Seven oh eight? We do have another special or we do have another public hearing scheduled that's scheduled for 7:30, so I think we need to wait for that. So, in the meantime, I guess we can go through some of our regular meeting business.
Excuse me, Bill? There's quite a few people outside. Should we move to the big building or run crime law in here? There's quite a few people outside. Should we go to the big room or stay in here?
I'm downstairs, so I can have my seat, so.
You said there were more coming.
Well, let's get through with this. If we need to change, we'll move closer to 7:30. That's okay.
No, it's all good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, first item on our regular meeting agenda is approval of the November 20th meeting minutes. Hopefully, everybody's got a copy. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
I make the motion. We accept the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Carol to accept the minutes.
A second.
A second by Lindsay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are... We are seven girl, right? I should mention that Anita Taylor did call in, and she is sick and not able to attend, so Lucas is sitting in as a regular board member tonight.
Her sex, I think.
Her sex.
Sex. Sex approved.
Sex.
Say seven, yes.
Oh, did I say something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I just see somebody sitting down. Okay.
Same height.
Okay. Under old business, application for a special use permit by the Red Oger Restaurant. It's unfortunate that people go online and say things that aren't true, but that happens. No one did speak one way or the other on this. We do, I believe, need to do a couple of things. First of all, the county... County planning did review and recommended approval. Proposed gift shop should pose no significant county-wide or intercommunity impact. It's recommended the site plan be updated to note any no parking or wayfinding signage that will be installed for customers. And Steve got a copy of that as well.
He suggested about the cones, but I see the cones are out there, so.
You put those on, we'll see you next day.
Excuse me, but those of you who are facing the wall, we sitting here can't hear you because your voices are going that way. If you could please speak up, it would be really helpful.
We suggested putting the cones out for track going out that way, and they done it.
Cones?
Cones.
Thank you.
Near the parking lot, no.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do need to go through the short environmental assessment form.
Okay.
So, I don't know if any of you have copies of it, since that was last month's handouts. Part one has been filled out, so we need to go through part two, the impact assessment, and indicate whether there's no or small impact, or if there's potentially a large, moderate, large impact may occur. So, I'll read down through these. There's 11 of them. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regs?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Believe that it will. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause establishment of a critical environmental area? You don't have a critical environmental area around there. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to the existing level of traffic or affect the existing infrastructure from mass transit, bike, or walkway? It isn't going to change the existing level of traffic, but, you know, as we had talked, there was some concern about vehicles parking on the shoulder. That's been mitigated by Steve was going to approach the DOT to have no parking signs installed there. In the meantime, he set cones up, construction cones, so that keep the traffic through there or out of the way when the gift shop is open. So, I think we can check that as a small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
Public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, and aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, and fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Okay. So... Part three, for every question, part two that was answered, monitor a large impact or if there's a need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action may or will not result in a significant adverse impact, please complete part three. I can write something down there about what I just said with traffic. So, I think we've determined, based on all the responses, that this will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Somebody would like to make such a motion?
So...
Second. Second.
So, we have a motion by Sharon, second by Richard. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is carried six zero. I got it right there, huh? Okay. I put together a draft resolution for the special use permit because special use permits are supposed to be all done by a resolution. Thank you. Okay, I'll read through this real quick. Whereas an application for a special use permit under Section 182-14, Paragraph C2, regarding an expansion of an existing non-conforming use, Section 182-50, special use permits of the Town of Stafford Zoning Ordinance was received in the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant to enlarge an existing non-conforming use on their property at 6492 Main Road to operate a gift shop and a prefabricated 25-foot-by-10-foot building accessory to the existing restaurant as detailed in their application. Whereas a short environmental assessment form was completed by the applicant and submitted to the planning board for review under SEAKER. Whereas the planning board determined that it was lead agency for the SEAKER review, and upon review, the EAF determined no significant adverse environmental impacts would be created by this proposal. Whereas a public hearing was duly held on December 18th, 2024, at which time no major public concerns were raised on the proposal. Whereas the county planning board has recommended approval of the special use permit application and further recommends that the site plan be updated to note locations of no parking signs and any wayfinding signage that will be installed for customers. And whereas the applicant has developed a site plan that satisfies the concerns of the planning board relative to access, parking, and buffer zones, and meets the criteria set forth in Section 182-50, Paragraph D, Items 1 through 8, and whereas the planning board has determined that the conditions of Section 182-14, Paragraph C2 have been satisfied by this proposal, now therefore, be it resolved that special use permit... I've got a figured number out. I haven't done that yet. Be issued to the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant to enlarge an existing non-conforming use on their property to operate a gift shop and a prefabricated 25-foot-by-10-foot building accessory to the existing restaurant as detailed in their application and is shown on the site plan on file with the town with following conditions. Gift shop hours will be concurrent with the restaurant operating hours and will be closed when the restaurant is closed. And I think that is... That's... That was indicated to be the case by Steve. Customers will be directed to park in the main restaurant parking lots and walk to the gift shop. The intent of the gift shop is to provide an opportunity for restaurant patrons to browse for localized artisan gifts while dining or waiting for a table. That was in Steve's letter. Site plan shall be updated to show locations of wayfinding signage for its customers if that is to be provided. That was the county recommendation. New York State DOT will be requested to install no parking signs in front of the restaurant's highway curving to discourage gift shop and restaurant patrons from parking on the road shoulder. Depending on the time of year, that's more or less of an issue with cars coming off of Roanoke Road trying to turn. Until signs are installed, construction cones will be placed along the shoulder of the highway during the operating hours to prevent vehicles from parking on the shoulder in the vicinity of the gift shop. Handicap parking will remain in the area in front of the restaurant between the highway curve and the building. Site plan should be updated to show locations of no parking signs and temporary cone placements. And I threw one in there for you, Lindsay. Lighting for the gift shop area shall be dark sky compliant, shall not be allowed to extend onto adjacent properties. All lighting on the gift shop shall be turned off when the restaurant is closed. And they're just planning on operating this twenty, you know, a few times, a few hours when the restaurant's open, so. Those are my suggestions for conditions. I don't know if anybody has objections to any of those or if you want to add some.
Pretty much called it that.
So, I guess we need to do this by a roll call vote? We need to do this by a roll call?
Oh, yeah. Carol?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Yes. Six to...
Six zero. So, it is carried. Okay, great. I will get this finished up, and we'll get the paperwork back over to the Red Oger. Okay. So, do we want to slide over into the under room? Okay, so I think what we're going to do is adjourn for a few minutes and move over into the larger room.
We're going to the other room.
Does anyone have a key to the other room?
Five more together.
Yeah, Mark told me she had it. That means you got to move your camera. Make sure everybody are a little bit more comfortable. You're going to spread out a little bit. Usually, we don't get a popular crowd for our planning board meetings. Okay. At this point, I will start the public hearing for the Carolina Eastern Crocker application. I'll leave a public hearing notice. Notice hereby given that the Town of Stafford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. at Stafford Town Hall, 8903 Route 237, Stafford, New York, to discuss the application of Carolina Eastern Crocker LLC for site plan approval of a building 80-foot by 140-foot by 18-foot-high building to be used for fertilizer storage. This is on tax map number... Tax map parcel 6-1-42.211. Said Planning Board will convene at the same time as the time stated above to hear from all persons in connection with such matters. Order of the Stafford Planning Board, William Vannell, Chairman. Okay, I will remind people of the rules for the public hearing that were recently adopted. The main things are you need to identify you when you speak. Time is valuable, so we want to limit speakers to three minutes, so please be as brief as you can. Please speak to the board. And if there are people who want to submit written statements, but don't have them prepared, we can adjourn the public hearing. And a lot of time for that to be submitted, but we have it in time, and we can't be going about this forever, so we want to get things in here, get the application processed and a decision made. Okay. Is there... How do you want to go about this first? Is there anybody who would like to speak?
I would like to just ask that you all introduce yourselves. You don't have name flags in front of you, and on board meeting introduction, it doesn't say who you are, so it would be helpful if we need to speak to one of you, that we don't have to say, hey, you.
This is a low-budget planning board. Sorry.
Okay. Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, this is a low-budget planning board. We don't have name flags.
And you don't need to identify yourselves to the rest of the...
I didn't say that.
Thank you.
Walt, go ahead.
What?
Tell them who you are.
Oh, okay. Walt Krzyszowski, our retiring secretary of...
I'm Carol Quail.
Bill Vannell, Chairman?
Sharon Bell, your grade.
Lucas Torre.
Lindsay Oder.
Richard Scliers.
I'm Red.
Has everyone signed in?
Is that where we're just signing?
Anyone who wants to sign in for me to take me to the walk?
How you doing, Rick?
All right, Dick. How are you? Didn't know there was a sign-up sheet.
Yeah, we had... We were hiding it.
So, if we have a coffee break during this, do I have to sign in for the second half to get my certificate?
Before we take public counts, I just want to read a couple of things into the record. Justice County Planning Board submitted a notice of final action recommending approval for... This is for the site plan review of a constructed new 11,200-square-foot dry fertilizer storage building in an existing agribusiness facility. They recommend approval. It says, "Proposed fertilizer storage building should pose no significant county-wide or intercommunity impact. It is recommended that the town contact fire department for their comments on this application and to alert them of the presence of this building and its contents." I did contact the Stafford Fire Department in a letter. Sent them a copy of the application and the site plan. They responded, leaving a voicemail on my answering machine. I talked to the fire chief, Tim McDowell, and he intends to give me this in writing, but basically, I made a memo of the voicemail, which I realize is not... Doesn't have much legal standing, but it'll suffice until we get the written comments. But he stated that he had reviewed the CE Crocker site plan and not have any issues with the location of the building or anything. I don't see any issues with space. It's pretty much gravel all the way around that location. I don't have any concerns for putting it up there. If you need anything else from me, please call me at left his phone number. That was on December 12th. So... So, we did address the comment from county planning to get the fire department input. So, I guess at this time, if there's any members here that wish to speak on this application? Yes, sir?
My name is David Cook. I'm counsel for CE Crocker, and I give the recommendation that's been made. My only point that I'd like to make is the purpose of this meeting is nothing other than the site plan. It has nothing to do with the overall use of the site. That'll be another time. So, in essence, public comments on that, this time, wouldn't be time, and we... That's all we're going to say.
Can't hear a word. Can't hear anything.
My name is Dave Cook. I'm counsel for CE Crocker. Just reminded the board, the purpose of tonight's meeting is only for the site plan. We're both bringing the site plan approval. Obviously, you're welcome, you can make any comments you want, but for the purpose of the site plan, that's what we're doing tonight, so we'll... We have nothing further to say.
Rick Branton?
Those of you that don't know me, I'm Rick Branton. My family started this whole thing when they took that land and turned it into Buckley's custom training. We sold it and sold it and sold it. So, they calling out me. I'm a Johnny come lately tonight. I'm assuming we have a site plan somewhere? Do you have a copy of one I can look at quickly, or is it in the... Do you have a copy of one I can look at quickly, or is it in the wall in there, or? Because we got a lot of Johnny come latelys probably in this room. I'm very well versed with that property, but you sit here, we go off the moon with our hands and everything, call it a game.
Two thirty seven, Bartoff Railroad, bad. This is the proposed building right here.
All these property, the old railroad stuff.
Yep.
And where's this building going now?
This is Ricky's old place.
Can we all come up and look at that because we don't have copies to see?
So where exactly is this new building?
This is Stafford.
Somewhere near where I thought they had an airport hangar.
This is the old railroad. This is part of.
No, this is south, that's north. We're carrying on that. Okay, I thought you had number two thirty seven. Three, two thirty seven, this is Prince right right here. Gotcha, Bartoff Road comes over here, right. So this is on the west side of two thirty seven. Right to south of Bartoff Road. And they said the exception, these are all existing buildings, these are all buildings.
And this is the residence. A private residence.
The residence, the house doesn't show, the garage is here, the house doesn't show.
Right, okay.
Well, this helps me organize, I appreciate that.
So this is going to be, this is going to be very impactful for two thirty seven.
You meant your last, what's that number?
One hundred and forty four point four feet.
Forty four.
This is the proposed building.
Oh, this is the building?
Two hundred and forty six feet from the center of the railroad.
I thought we were looking at this.
That won't even get to me. What gets to me is that manure lagoon across the road.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Good evening, uh, my name is Ian Shavitz. Um, I'm from the law firm of Lippis Mathias, and I'm here as counsel for Mr. and Mrs. Prince, who live adjacent to the, uh, to the new, uh, to the Crocker facility. I know Mr. Cook has indicated that this is about site plan, which it is. You know, I'm not here to argue what should or shouldn't occur on the Crocker property, but one of the standards that the planning board has to look at is the harmonious use between the existing facility, what's being proposed, and adjacent landowners. And I think what's important in that is to recognize the impacts that are, that are occurring as we stand here today, and then those that will be added to, accumulative impacts with respect to the new facility, all of which is within the context of what needs to be looked at under CE Crocker, as well as in the, uh, the standards. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to talk about some of the existing conditions, I'm not going to talk about whether that parcel should or shouldn't be used for, um, you know, for, for the business that's there. So as I said, I represent, uh, the Princes here, and what they've been forced to endure along with other neighborhood property owners is their houses, their lawns, I'm sorry, their patios, their swimming pools coated with moss and algae as a result of the fertilizer operations that are occurring in the property.
So what?
We have a, uh, we have had the algae sample. We have a report, we'll be submitting that along with, uh, written comments. So Crocker's operations have substantially increased through continuous piecemeal and incremental development by use of site plan approvals. The operations now include receiving and storing, mixing and blending massive quantities of fertilizer that have created unbearable conditions for the adjacent residential neighbors. And we're now here with, uh, the Crocker facility seeking an 11,000 square foot facility to store hundreds of tons of urea fertilizer. And the way that I look at this is, it's really, it's death by a thousand cuts, and let me explain that. Each new fertilizer storage and operation building that's been added has been a new cut because each has increased the fugitive fertilizer dust emissions that are landing on and causing moss and algae to grow on the neighboring properties. Neighbors can't enjoy their backyards, they're very concerned about the health impacts, and in fact, the, the, uh, those that are on well water are, you know, even greater concerned because they're, you know, consuming that. They can't swim in their pools, the kids can't play on their swing sets and their playgrounds, they, they can't sit in the chairs. And I, I brought some pictures which I'll hand out to you, and I guess can be introduced in the record if that's how we do it. Just some sets of pictures that really do show, uh, really what the mold that is occurring as a result of these fertilizer operations. And these are on, these are on Mr. Crocker's property and other adjoining properties.
Are they, are these identified as the worth they are?
Uh, no, but our written submission will in fact be, these are just provisional here. So, and maybe matters worse, a number of the fertilizer storage buildings are illegally located. They violate the Stafford Town Code provision that states prohibits storage of fertilizer both within 100 feet of a lock containing residential use in an agricultural residential district. By our measures, and I'll provide these as well, this is a, just an area of, uh, the Crocker facility. And the buildings on here that are labeled, I'm sorry, probably one more, thank you. Buildings labeled one, two, and three, uh, on the pictures are within 100 feet of the residential lot. And building one, which is 30 feet from the Prince property, also doesn't comply with the, uh, conditions of the special use permit that, I'm sorry, the site plan approval that this board previously, uh, that this board previously approved. The area marked four on that, uh, picture is where fertilizer is poured into open trucks, which is a major source of the dust that's going into the adjacent neighbor's property. And here's a final picture which we pass down, which shows from the neighbor's property looking out where this fertilizer is being dumped. And that two is within 100 feet. So the nineteen, yeah, they're all the same, you can just pass them out. The 1990 special use permit, um, that a whole slew of site plan approvals, including the most recent one, are based upon was for an 8,000 square foot building that was not allowed, specifically not allowed, to store fertilizer. The fertilizer operations today would never have been approved, uh, under the special use permit because that special use permit standard requires the town to look at health, safety, and welfare, harmonious use, adjacent use, uh, to residential and adjoining, uh, property owners. So I guess our point is, is that the Crocker facility, they don't have the unfettered right to build and expand as they please without, uh, you know, and essentially become an industrial use without taking into account the impacts that have occurred and that would be added to, uh, if this new facility is, uh, is approved. So we're not here saying that the Crocker facility, uh, this building that's being proposed should never be approved, but what we are saying is that before you approve it, several things have to happen. First and foremost, the illegal uses of the fertilizer storage facilities that are within 100 feet of the adjacent residential properties must be addressed. That has to be addressed before another approval can be granted, uh, on this, uh, on this property. And that means either fertilizer has to be removed from those facilities, or it means that the facilities have to be, uh, adjusted in size, if you will, to make sure they are outside of that 100-foot area. As well as the conditions for the last site plan, I'm sorry, yeah, site plan approval, uh, with respect to the conditions that were not yet met. Second, given that we've had 35 years of consecutive site plans based upon a 1990 special use permit, this board is required to comply with CE Crocker and should in fact find that this is a positive declaration and require a full EIS. The standard there is whether your decision may result in an adverse impact. And here, and when we look at that, we look at the impacts of what you are actually approving, as well as those that are currently occurring, cumulative impacts, the new on top of the old. And as part of that review, there needs to be mitigation measures to ensure that any new facility is not going to essentially create these unbearable conditions, uh, for the adjacent neighbors. And I'll say, finally, and after that is done, then this board should consider whether to approve the requested building. Our written comments, I know we're limited in time, our written comments will, uh, also lay out the fact that we believe that this is a special use permit as opposed to a site plan approval, special use permit is applied for, uh, and given the now industrial use, a warehouse is in industrial use under your town code, that this should be approved by a special use permit as opposed to a site plan permit. Thank you very much for your time.
Just a couple quick, you're gonna submit some written comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, those should be in. I think we were talking about a couple of weeks, two weeks, Wednesday night?
Yeah, that's, that's probably. Does that take us on?
Doesn't have a December calendar, oh, come on. But, yeah, eighteen and fourteen is what, thirty two, so that would be by Wednesday, the first, let's say, if we figure on Friday, the third of January, the latest?
Yep, that's fine.
You mentioned, uh, a report?
Yes, sir.
You did some test results?
Yes, sir.
If you had did some testing and have the results in there?
Yes.
Will that, will the report?
Be, that will be attached to our written comments, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, has, has CE Crocker seen that report?
No, no, we, we had, we had this done, we hired an environmental professional, they went ahead and did the testing, uh, and, uh, we've received their report. Once we submit it to the planning board, presumably it becomes public information and, um, you know, not going to be denied any number of times.
Well, I think maybe it'd be appropriate to have a response, to have Crocker the opportunity to look at that and respond. And we also want to have our, our town experts, our town attorney, or town engineer take a look at that.
Absolutely, absolutely, why don't I, why don't I plan on giving you the report, uh, in advance of our, and I'll provide extra privacy.
I can work with the town in terms of getting the type of response, if you can kind of tell me on that.
Oh, in terms of, in terms of Mr. Crocker's response?
Responding to your signature?
Yep.
What did D E C tell you?
D, we did not talk to D E C.
Tony did.
Well, by the time he did, it was not.
How would you know that?
And I will, I will add though, that while D E C may not require any sort of a permit, that still doesn't mean, fair enough. Mr. Van Oostkern, any other questions?
I did have one and I forgot.
I'll be sitting right there, so if you remember.
Hopefully it'll come to me.
Please let me know. Thank you.
Okay.
So with that said, the new building is further than 100 foot.
Yeah, here, that's a new building, one other than 100.
Make a statement, or? Anybody else who would like to make a statement? Yes, sir?
Andrew Darling, the, uh, from the property south of the Crocker area. We're a farm, we, for many years, uh, understood the, the need for, I think they call it, uh, agricultural use for things. You know, you don't complain about the manure up and in because, well, it's a farm area, it's pretty manure. Or, you know, south of here, someone has an apple orchard and they have a small shack and they sell apples once a year. We sort of have, yes, there's agricultural use, but there's also kind of small contained agricultural use. They're not spreading manure every day of the year, they're not selling, you know, 10 tons of apples a day. So there's kind of a balance between it's agricultural use, but it's also a residential area. And, um, you know, over the last 30 years, it has gone from a one-room shack north of us to, uh, Gotham Chemical. I mean, it's, they talk about bringing in boxcars worth the fertilizer. And I think, you know, if I had a food stand, that would be agricultural use, but if I installed Tops Grocery Store on my front lawn, I think we'd probably have a problem with it by the, by the scale of it. To the north of us, I think we've gotten a little bit past it being small agricultural use, and I think it has become industrial in its scale. And, you know, at 10,000 square feet, that's three times the size of my largest barn. Just full of fertilizer, I mean, granted, it might still be agricultural use, maybe there's not a good definition of agricultural use, but I think at a certain point it becomes industrial in scale, which is not really conducive to being in a residential area. I mean, if they could, they could move to Route 237 and 33, and I think if that's commercial, there's a spot next to the cause that's industrial. They don't really need to be in a residential area doing this. That's all I have to say.
So anybody else who would like to speak?
I would, please, I'm Miss Beck Car, and I would like, in essence, to build on what Andrew Darling just said. I live on Room 237 and barely knew that initially there was an agricultural fertilizer outlet. Until now, it is a, and, and I noticed this evening, sitting in the other room facing me, is the zoning map for Stafford. And this is clearly in an agricultural residential area. This is not an agricultural business. They are not growing anything. They are a distribution trucking center. And the trucking is unfettered. I have spoken to the sheriff's department about the truck traffic going by my property, and the sheriffs, and I will quote, unless we sat on 237 24/7, we would not be able to slow down that traffic, and we haven't the manpower to do it. So they are not going, and I've asked the state, I've, I've talked to the state D M T to change the speed on this road in order to slow it down because of the numbers of trucks we now have on 237 going to and leaving Eastern Carolina Crocker. And they have assured me that, I asked, and they said, my lone voice is a voice in the wilderness. I said, what if I get my, my town council in on this? They said, you're just too small. That my voice, that even a town council requesting a change. I said, could we change the speed? Because from the Darling House to Route 5, which is, what, three quarters of a mile to Route 5? That, all that is, is a letting up of your brake, or it's an, it's either an acceleration coming north. It's zipping up to where it changes from 40 to a 55 mile, this is just an acceleration path. You must know that, Lindsay. And, and going south, they are basically, you can hear the kind of brakes being used to decelerate going toward Route 5. It is horrible, horrible. And if my children were still, well, they were born when we lived in this house, I've been in my house since, uh, 1978. And they used to ride their bikes in front of my house. I barely want, I want to tell you that I was parked on the shoulder of my road with the tailgate of my station wagon up. And I was taking something out. And I had just stepped away from the raised tailgate when one of the trucks from Eastern Carolina Crocker went by at such a speed that he kicked up a rock that was this big, and it came down through the glass of the raised tailgate. through the glass of the raised tailgate. Frankly, I was not a happy camper. If I had still been standing where I was seconds before, it would have killed me. I closed the trunk, I got in my car, and I bloody well followed him. And I have talked to the sheriffs and the state police, and I admitted that I followed him at the speed necessary to follow him to get my car turned around, go down Route 5, and I caught up with him at Clipknot Road and made him stop. He was going eighty-three miles an hour. And I reported him, and I, I, I got his truck number and his name and the company, I can't even remember what it was. But I called, the business he was driving for could have cared less. They don't care. All they want is profit, 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 fast, 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 speed, 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 and we're all irrelevant. And I am not in favor of making that industrial trucking distribution center any bigger and more impactful than it now is. And I am still on my way. And I don't know how many of you sitting here realize that the largest potable aquifer in this, in the county of Genesee is right there in that field across from my house, where our boards have permitted the storage of these chemicals to leak into that water. And with the droughts we've had, and you see it on the nightly news, how much the Colorado River has gone down, how much the Mississippi River has gone down, we are in a water crisis on this planet. And to think that we don't want that potable water someday? We really need to rethink this, and we should be protecting that water, not endangering it. And I want to thank you for allowing me to say what I have been given the time to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Please.
Our trucks have GPS, has a camera, and they're governed at seventy miles an hour.
And every single one of them leaving your facility?
You said eighty.
That's right. It didn't say Eastern Carolina Crocker, it was somebody else who had come and gotten it, stopped and left.
That would be a farmer.
That would be a client.
I ask them something.
That's a client of Eastern Carolina Crocker, and we are subjected to their behaviors.
Thanks for clarifying that, though.
Are the Carolina Easterns' trucks have permits for the posted roads, wait, limited posted roads? If not, they better stay off the transit road. And I'll bring you a five-gallon pail of pictures of them going up and down there. And they're all over five-ton. And they're not the sprayer rigs, and they're not the spreader to the trucks that are hauling material to your plant and hauling material away from your plant, up the transit road. The Clipknot Road is the route you have to take. I guess we gotta start taking pictures.
Did you hear what he, he indicated, that if it's a local delivery? I don't know what the delivery's telling, but if it's a local delivery, they have to use the local route, and it's allowed, I believe, on the line. If they're just passing through, if they're just going through, then it's, you know, they have to stay on the public, the local delivery.
Yeah, they're not definitely in the fields.
Okay.
All right, my name is Barbie Starwitz. My grandfather came here in nineteen thirty-two. We're in the Starwitz family, there's lots of us. All right, I am in support of C.E. Crocker. The reason being is stop and think. When was Agway opened up? City of Batavia. My grandfather, my brothers, the whole entire family, my relatives that are in the, in the farming business too, they've got fertilizer right in the city of Batavia. If people are scared of something in the country, why was, why is it still in existence in Batavia for year after year after year? Fertilizer is to help and to, to supplement the soils, so I can grow something. If I have corn year after year and I don't have fertilizer, what do I do? I think that the meeting is here to get a happy medium. We have a site plan that we could all work and get our input in. If we have negativity, it's not going to amount to anything. And, and as far as mold, I have a party bus. There's mold on the top of my bus. I personally live on Bank Street Road, there's dust. That is a normal thing. I live on a, it's a county-run road, so that is normal with the dust. If there's problems with the mold being on vehicles or in people's houses, call in experts. But you have to realize too, it's through Genesee County, it's not limited just to Stafford. All right? And as far as the farming law, there's farming laws that are established for New York State to protect us, to continue farming. We can all work through this together. Negativity is not going to help anything. Leaching into waters, my brother's fed fertilizer right next to my house. Have I ever been, and I'm sixty-two years old, have I ever been sick from fertilizer? Leaching in? No. If there is a problem?
It's a little different than, I'm sorry. Where do you live?
Bank Street Road, seven-three-three.
So you're not in Stafford?
I have property in Stafford, and I also have...
But it doesn't affect your life?
Yes, it does.
In Stafford?
Yes.
Please. Okay, thank you. Keep the comments.
All I'm saying is that, that everybody should be working together to protect us farmers. We don't have fertilizer plants locally, what are we gonna do? How are you gonna grow a product?
Organic, it's a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to speak. I'm Mandy Geisler, two-thirty-seven Bartoff Road. We've been there since January of 'oh-nine, and some of those pictures are ours. That view from our deck is that chute. Now, I don't, I grew up on a farm, so I'm not trying to be negative. That's why we've been supportive. My parents are great farmers. So it's not the agriculture part. It's a part that, I brought my two children here today, and I'm trying to be calm because this has been a buildup. We have quietly lived in this environment, and now it has grown, and it has grown, and it has grown. And now, those pictures show that my children can't even play on that playset because there's green, I don't have testing done, I would test it, but green substance in those pictures where my children played a week ago, that upsets me that it was on there, that I didn't know was on there, or I would have gotten up there and washed it off. My daughter has terrible allergies, allergies, excuse me, and she doesn't want to leave the house because it gets so dusty, and the substance from those chutes, the newest chute that you see from my deck, we were sitting outside, and that chute that I didn't know was, yep, right there, I didn't know was being built, I was never told about it, I guess I'm not privy to that information. I was about to drink out of my cup, my daughter's on the playset, and my daughter said, Mom, something's sprinkling on us, there's something on us, and we don't know what it is. And I said, what are you talking about? And I, I swear, I picked up my cup and I went to drink out of it, and that substance from that chute was on my cup, not dust, a substance. And my kids play out there, in that play yard, right where that chute's built. So, that next day, I called and I asked to speak to Dave, and I said, Dave, this, this, this can't go. We have been quiet, we have dealt with the trucks up against that fence, and I don't know when it starts, he can tell you, May to August, the trucker's right up against our fence, the dust, everything that it's to do. But when there's a substance on my cup, and I look over and there's a chute, and it's coming towards us and landing on these two girls, that's a different story. We've had to put, and I'm not gonna give a number because I don't have actuals, but my husband can't be here because of work, a substantial and a most expensive water system that we could afford. Because at the time, when I was pregnant with her, before we had a water system, I got a pool life poisoning. Now, can we track it back? I don't know. But I had to get a water authority in, we had to start the system of a water system, and now, just last year, we were told that our water is no longer good. We had to pay another five thousand to finish the water system. So, that's why I had to stand up. I'm not against farming, I'm not against Crockers, I'm against quality of life for us and my kids. And that chute, I don't, I don't think, I don't know what the rules are, if we're allowed to know that, but there's no covering it, and I was assured by Dave and Mr. Crocker, well, we'll say, we'll say Mr. Crocker, that that chute would not run again until it was enclosed, because that affected us negatively. We can't eat at that table on that deck, and that is why we built the deck, to watch our children, to eat at that table. And thank you, that's, I'm, I'll keep it there. I'll keep it there. Our quality of life, I got so upset about all this, the kids can't have a pool, kids can't have anything, and we tell them we can't because of the dust and because of the substance that's going in the air. So, we looked into a realtor, we talked to a realtor, because if you can't fix it, and she said, you've got the farm directly behind you, all you see is the farm, the business. She goes, I don't know if I can sell your house, because all there is, is a business behind you. No grass, no greenery, just a business. So we may be stuck and not be able to move because of location. Thank you.
Has that, has she been recovered, or hasn't been used?
It has been used.
Says he said it would not be?
I had a text message, please come to my house, they're coming. And then I have pictures of the chute being used after they promised to cover it up. And this is the first town meeting I've been to since 'oh-nine, when we came here, so we have not had a problem up until it affected us, myself, my husband, and my children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
I don't have a lot, my name's Deanna Latta, I live right across the street, we just bought a house in the last two years. And I don't have a ton of information, I just wanted to put on record that I moved from, you know, the city areas to go to the country because I wanted to have a different life for my children. I like the area that I'm in, and being right across the street, would rather not turn into a ton of more buildings because we already don't have farm to look across the street from. It's fine now, we have, just basically looking to be, if we're all living in a residential area, to be good neighbors. I mean, we all have to coexist, so there should be some way to coexist without it not affecting the neighbors around the area. I don't plan on leaving here, I would like to raise my children here and die, you know, at some point in a very long, you know, distant future, but it, I didn't buy in this area to just up and want to move in a couple of years and it turn into a problem down the road. So, all I'm saying is, I just would like to put on record that there's gotta be some way to come, some type of bug, rid of that, everyone can coexist around each other and it not turn into an industrial, because I didn't move to the country to turn, to live across the street from that. That's all, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Stand there.
Hi, Cindy Swanson, and I live on Picardo Road. And I'm wondering about the proximity, which is supposed to be a hundred feet, someone said it was a hundred feet, did I misunderstand that?
A hundred feet fertilizer, fertilizer storage facility cannot be one hundred feet from a residential lot line.
And is it at this time happening?
There are multiple buildings that are within a hundred feet.
So is there a way of you measuring the particulate that's within the hundred feet? You'd have to measure over and over and over to get a, an average?
It's, it's a, the, the law itself is absolute, it just says you cannot, you don't have to worry about the impacts, it cannot be within one hundred feet of a fertilizer storage building of a residential lot line.
Do we understand what the scientific components of the urea particulate is? Because this is a dust rather than a liquid.
Correct. The existing fertilizer, we don't know if it was, if it's urea or not. If it is urea, it's supposed to be stored in this new building, that's where you do get into issues, and I'm not a scientist, but you do get into issues with dust in potable water that creates health hazards.
And is there a way that we could find out more about that?
Probably a number of resources. What I can say is we, the testing we did was of the mold and of the algae that had landed, and that's what's been sampled.
There's an MS, yes, she has some, which is, right there.
Thank you, is this for me to keep?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I've, I have stood in this room before, and, and I know you're all sick of me.
No.
But I read, okay? And one of the things I read about being affected by this industry is the health of the people in Stafford, and it concerns me, I mean, seriously concerns me. And over another issue, we were very concerned about the health rates in Stafford. And a number of years ago, now you're new, because I don't know your face, but we, we did a lot of research and found out that if you dig and you, and you get from the state of New York, health records. We in Stafford have horrible health records. We are higher than the state, we are high, Genesee County is terrible for, for Parkinson's and MS and cancer incidents. And the worst place in Genesee County is, well, guess what? It's Stafford. And if you go down Route 5, and you have said it to me in the past, or down Transit Road, you want to go down with somebody who knows the people who live in all those houses, and you're gonna go, incidence of cancer, incidence of cancer, death by cancer, death by cancer. And we have unordinately high numbers of the, of the most tragic diseases, childhood brain tumors, within a mile. We really need to take this seriously, and how much more should we be expected to take from what may, may contribute to this? And if they keep building on, on gravel, somebody said it's gonna be on gravel, or that that should make it okay. Well, where, once something rains on gravel, where does it go? It goes into the ground, and then...
Can I clarify that?
Yeah.
It's being built on the concrete slab.
And then is there, is there a, a catch basin, a, a drain pipe? And where does the drain pipe go from in that building?
There isn't, is there?
Yes, there are. Because I saw them be put in, and I told the town board, and there were PVC pipes that came out of the property and ended up in the drainage ditch along Route 5. And you go by any time after a rain...
Two-thirty-seven.
I'm sorry, two-thirty-seven, and you'll see a slick in, in the culvert along, and where is that gonna go? It's gonna go across the street to, to Black Creek. And it's, and it goes down into that aquifer I'm referring to. We need to look at this big picture. It's not one company just wants to build a building. It truly impacts all of us.
I was speaking at the proposal, which is the subject of this up here.
Yes.
It's a concrete slab with no drainage outlet.
So where's the water gonna go?
So, yeah, so where, so where does anything go to?
It's gonna turn, so it's gonna turn to ice? It's completely covered, so there's no liquid in the building, you know, I believe, is that correct?
Correct. So what are you saying?
But your point is, well, your point is saying...
Water, it's gonna be water in the building.
Yeah, water gets, water goes into buildings, it has, it has to have an egress, it, it just does.
It would be on the tires one day.
Yeah, it'd be on truck tires, you know, that kind of stuff.
There's no way to keep water out of...
There's no way to keep water out of the building.
This gentleman has something to contribute. But thank you again. But I, I do hope that you'll keep that in mind.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else?
Can I just...
Tony?
Yes. I'm Tony Prins. I'm moving to the east. So, my concerns are basically the same as I always have. The use of that facility, there is, my family's health impacts my family and their health. And I'm concerned about their health. They really enjoy the property, go outside, enjoy it outside. You talk about moss analogy, you might get it. Everyone says there's moss analogy, but not to this extent. The moss analogy I'm talking about is on a pool cover. How's that happen? Rain gets on the pool cover and all of a sudden it turns green. It should not happen. All of my friends that have pools don't have this issue. My deck, my patio in the back pulls up, faces south. No way in the world that should have moss analogy going on that. To the point where you look at that picture, you can still recall on it where it's wet. It is slimy out there. If it's not coming from that facility, someone's got to explain how it's happening. We pressure washed it this year. Theology of moss are coming back already. So, I don't understand. You're saying it's not coming from them? I, I disagree. The testing we did was the sampling on surfaces on that deck, on the roof and back of the house. That's where the stuff showed up. So, it is on our property. That's, that's the concern. That is my concern. Quality of life down there, we don't go outside. Beepers, the backup beepers, the pool, I'm afraid, you know, phrase limit, but you got to wonder, what's in the pool? What's falling in the pool? The pool's a great big catch. And all it does, if anything lands on it, it sticks to it. It's water. And lastly, the most, the other thing that's important is property value. Our property value has been adversely impacted by this. Our property value is less than you would expect. And it's not because of the house. It's because of the neighboring property. So, we're not against ag. None of us are against ag. I'm not against Mr. Crocker. He can do his business anywhere he wishes, but he can't adversely affect me. And that's the issue. My quality of life is being harmed by them. And that's, and whether they want to spearhead say it's not done, it's impossible. They built the vent flooding plant directly behind my house. It could have been anywhere else, but not in that. They put it right behind the barn. The barn that they built is too close to my property. The one that went to the ZVA, I totally, totally told them, "I do not want this building here." And as part of what you said earlier, there's some code, there's some planning board requirements that were not met. They raised the grade where they weren't supposed to. We're supposed to have a screen in between us. It never happened. I called the town, talked to Bill. Bill got ahold of Jerry Wood. Went to Jerry Wood. He fired back without just complaining about it. Okay? Not complaining, was asking him to enforce requirements of the planning board. Nothing took place. After Jerry left, I talked to Bron Pan. Don Mullin's starting up now. Look at Don Mullin up to speed. Once he's up to speed, we'll get him involved. Don Mullin didn't make it. Nine months go by with Don Mullin. Nothing happens. Now, we're here. There's no way that grade should be that high. He parks semis up there. From that grade, he can look over my pool fence. That is, I mean, it's unacceptable. The pool fence is six foot high in the back to protect us from the neighboring properties. It should be 12 feet high. You're parked up three foot above the grade in a semi, looking into my property. How, why is that acceptable? It shouldn't be there. It was said specifically, and Bill can tell you, not to raise the grade. He puts those blocks up, the center blocks and the big blocks. They're barrier walls. They're retaining walls. They're permanent fixtures. Those are within 20 foot of my property line. Don't know why they're there. That's what's holding the building in place. Again, it shouldn't be there. But everyone, just, you say something, you comment, you get ignored. You get stalled until you get tired of looking, tired of talking, tired of answering questions. Nothing seems to happen. As far as this new building's concerned, sure, it's off the property line. I have no idea what you read it really does. I'm guessing it's costing. You say it won't get out of the building, well, there's nothing in that building to keep it in the building. There are things in industry that contain dust to the building itself. They're agricultural base, they say. They don't do those things. A truck goes in and loads it, he spills a little. Where's it land? On the ground. What does he do? He runs it over. He crushes them. Not intentional, sure is not intentional. He makes money on urea. He doesn't want to waste it. But it does fall out of the bucket. When he moves it with the tractor trailers and the loaders, I don't know how they do it. Gets in its conveyor, more dust is generated. Every time they move it, they generate dust and it lands on my property. That's my complaint. We're not against farming. I'm not against him. Just don't impact me. And he's, everything he's done adversely impacts me. You guys on the board need to take a look at it and say, "Wait a minute. This is wrong." I, I don't understand how it's not. With this dust in the air, the biggest concern now is my health, right? We got a sample telling me this dust in the air. What good is it doing to breathe fertilizer? Right? How about 30 years of it? What is, what are the long-term effects? I had died of lung cancer at 7 years old. Boy, it's too bad. Well, maybe it could have been prevented. I don't, I'm not choosing to be covered in fertilizer. If you want to live in the farm, on the farm and be an ag, that's great. But when the neighbor spreads menorah, it doesn't spread on your property. That's what's happening to me. I got fertilized every damn day, every day, from that facility. And I don't, I didn't give them the permission to do it. And you talk about the DEC, they said you probably have permits. You probably does. I don't remember signing off, saying it's okay to fertilize my property. And that's what's happening in my house. We don't open our windows during the day. Why? So, no dust gets in. So, you live, you live there. See how much you like it. You listen to all the noise, the backup beepers. I understand it's ag. No issue with ag. But I never complained about the smell of rotten cabbage. I never complained about menorah. Never complained about tractor trailers, trucks, anything. Trucks are fine. Tractors are fine. Don't say a word. But this is not that. This is an agricultural-based business in an ag residential area. I understand ag takes precedence, okay? If there's a conflict or something. But an ag resident, an ag-based business does not take precedence over residential property. And that's what's going to happen here. And on the planning board from the county, you all need to speak to them. That is not an approval to build this building. That says it has no countywide impact. Not that it has no local impact. You call up Leiva and you ask him. And you ask him exactly what he thinks of that property. And he's going to tell you it's industrial. We are not so industrial residential. We are ag residential. That needs to be, I don't know how you're reversing that. We can't coexist unless they do something different. There's no mitigation, there's no capture of any of the dust. There's no dust control to speak of. How are they going, and if even he says he's going to do it, who's going to police it? You know it's going to police it. It's only going to be, after nine months, when I give more moss on my property and the impact on my family and my neighbor's family, their place is worse than mine. Okay, they are, they are right on top of that. In this building that, you know, I didn't realize, he can't store fertilizer within 30 foot of my property line. Get it out of there. I want it gone. Or knock the building down. Either one's fine with me. But I'm done being, I've been nice. I've been patient. I tried to work with him. I really don't cause him a lot of trouble. Truck parked there overnight, I don't know what I made. I barely say a word. Backup beepers, they're, you know, you live next to a farm, you don't hear backup beepers. I can expect to hear tractors. Backup beepers all night long when they're moving snow, 5:00 in the morning, waking me up. It's, it's gotten to the point where it's hard to live there. And okay, you leave. And what, sell the house for peanuts? My house is appraised nowhere near what its value should be. Because of the neighbor, when they tried to raise me, Debbie Stapienza said, or Aunt Stapienza said, you know, they're like, during their assessment, said, "Look at the location. Most important thing in resident, in a property, real estate, location, location, location." And the town is consistently making my location worse. You're helping him de-create my property value. In fact, when it comes down to the assessment again, I'm asking for a deduction. And I don't see how you can deny me. I just can't take it. I just, it's just too much. The facility there, if you talk to Paul, you have to ask him what impression. He will tell you it's an industrial site. I called him this week, losing my mind about what he said there. What do you mean it's because we look at it at county level, not at the town level? That has no impact on the county. Okay, get it. He didn't mention what it has on us. Something needs to be done. And I don't know how you're going to undo what you've done. It just has to be assessed now. This building in the back, what's the mitigation for dust? Dust blows, dust will go out of it. I don't know what the urea paperwork says. Isn't the building supposed to be ventilated? Well-ventilated? And you store, you store urea? Look it up. Just take a look. I'm curious. There's no, there's no fans in there. There's no kind of, and if you had a fan, it'd probably be explosion-proof. Right? Can't put any electrical stuff in there, any sparks would probably light the stuff on fire. I don't know what it does. But dust can get on fire. There's all those buildings, all of them, anything they move, anytime they move dry fertilizer. And not even talk about the liquid. I have no idea what herbicides in there, how they blend it. If it's blended in a sealed container, if it gets in the air. Who knows what's going on? Like to think they've done the right thing. Under all the nation, right? We're not against farming. Family came from my mother-in-law, my father-in-law, farmers. That's not it. Not against fertilizer plants. Just don't want them dropping stuff on my property. Impacting me adversely. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Anybody else?
I was lucky enough to be handed this spec sheet for the safety of urea, dry urea, which means dry particulate, what Tony is speaking about. And as I look through this, what I'm seeing is hazard identification, not classified. Hazard identification not applicable, not applicable. As we go along, so many things they have not tested. They have not made it, they have not made an assignment of the critical aspects of the dust particulate. And this is 12 pages long. And it's absolutely fascinating. And I'll just say that I do have a DS and a master's degree in science. And so, I, I do know what I'm talking about when I, when I read this stuff. I just hope that you can listen to, to how very serious it is. It's the respiratory system and then it's the skin. And we're all, I mean, it's, it's in the air. And I wouldn't want to be living where Tony lives.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yeah, let's see. So, my name's Andy Curtis. So, I do work in the concrete industry. So, I am related to Tony and my sister. So, I do have our reality here, but, I mean, figure picture, I think the first person said it really well. Is you allow a former small business to become an industrial complex? And it's happened very incrementally. And as the lawyer pointed out at the very beginning, this isn't about the business. It's about adding another building. But that's what the reaction is to, is you're now allowing another incremental build to this complex. And somebody else brought up, with this person over here, I don't remember the name, the fact that this happens in other industries. But if you go to any well-run business in a residential neighborhood, it is tightly controlled. So, we first fumes, wastewater, dust cannot escape into the residential areas around it. But it sounds to me like this has been a very loose operation that has been implemented over time without the proper safety controls. So, that's led us to the situation we have now. Well, you know how a few individuals, right, were being rolled over because they're just a few? But they have real safety, real health concerns. And the issue isn't the moss. It isn't the greenery.
Me too.
It's the dust. It's fertilizer dust, right? And humans are not immune to fertilizer dust. It gets into your lungs, where does it go? Doesn't dissolve and come out. So, over time, there could be real significant health effects. We do not know that. But I think this town board would have to consider health effects. You have to worry about everyone. The few residents that are in the area, as well as the entire figure business. So, and you got to weigh that balance and you got to ask yourselves, are we doing the right thing there? Are we, are we doing the right thing to allow them to add another incremental part of this industrial complex without the proper controls? Without fixing what is already there? It's really, to me, it's really, it should come down to the health impact. Are we monitoring and guaranteeing for the safety of these people? So, that's all I have to say there. It's been, I think it's been a very good discussion, very good comments from both sides. But again, it just sounds like, this is your own. It's been outside town zoning, right? And it comes to a point where you got to draw a line and you got to say, "Okay. We must do something about this. This is a real problem." But else you wouldn't have all these people here.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? The, I did have a conversation on the town attorney earlier today. His suggestion, since we anticipated that there would be some additional information submitted, his suggestion was to adjourn the public hearing and not close it. I don't know if the board has any opinion on that.
I, I, just one more thing, and you can all go home. Just a question. Just one question. I'm not sure where I have to go. I've talked to Dave. I've talked to the owner. They assured me the chute would stop. I told them it's on my cup. I told them it was on my children. I told them that it's been in our grass. Our kids have lived there 13 years. Who do I have to speak to when I've asked Dave, I've asked the owner to stop running a chute that has no cover, no enclosure, nothing, that is landing on our living space? Our, our deck where we would like to eat? We have to wipe everything down. Now, I have to go clean my kid's playground because my daughter has kids coming over. Last weekend, you seen that picture where there's marks on top of that playground? There was another child there. What would the mom say if she knew her child was playing in that green substance? So, I don't know where to go. I don't know if I need to speak and see a lawyer. I don't know what I need to do so I can live knowing that I'm not going to ingest what's right in front of me right where I live and breathe.
Well, I think you made the right choice to come here tonight and express your...
Okay, thank you.
And hopefully, we'll be able to take it from there.
Yeah, I'd love you to stop by any time. Okay. You don't have to stay. Okay, thank you. We'll give you a dispensation. I lived here since 1966. I saw that little building that they started out with, with fertilizer. How did that fertilizer business, industry get that big and that loose? There, I mean, if they ever been watching as to whether the buildings are put in the right places? Why aren't they? The doctor in the paper, when he built on the front of his building on the north side of Main Street, they made him take it, take it down, take it apart. How about that? I mean, we're, we're here, we're hearing about the medical problems. These people are making money off the, the problems that these, these homeowners are having. I, I don't understand how the town is allowing it. And that's basically all I got to say.
Okay.
So, I have one more question. So, also, I believe reading town zoning is special use permits require annual review, at least annually, from the zoning enforcement, code enforcement officer. I don't think it's happened here in 34 years. I think we should put that on the schedule for some time to go look at that. Make sure you start reviewing that place for make sure it's compliant. Maybe some of us could have avoided it. But right now, 34 years, I'm not doing it. I don't know how that was allowed.
I can't think of...
No, no, I'm not, I'm asking you to speak. I think, I think the town needs to get ahold of the code enforcement officer and make sure he understands. Every special use permit needs to be reviewed every year. And I don't think that's happening.
A chemical company should have proper industry control. Do they have that? That's my question. That's my question.
I do have a question.
I know that the DEC does, they have very high inspections of facilities over there. And they have reports that are available. But I can't, I can't tell you.
Yeah, I can see what the first bills and stuff like that would happen before, no law.
No, they just take them, they have all the inspection inspections. It's a normal procedure. But we appreciate the balance, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
I married Tony's daughter, my mom lives in Batavia. She had to file a permit three separate times to extend her driveway four feet wider into her own yard. He's got a permit that's how old, put up how many buildings under that same permit? But nobody's, what's the point of enforcing any code, any permit, any, anything? Can I just go buy land in Stafford and build whatever I want? I had reached out earlier in the year, I wanted to buy the parcel by the driveway and build a vending venue. I just got married, went through the whole thing. Great revenue. Little, no dust, no nothing, maybe some noise. But no, I had to jump through all these loops, I talked to other people in the town that already tried to do this, go through all this stuff for nothing. Spend all this money, go through all the loops for nothing, but he can use a permit that's literally older than me. Why, what's the point exactly? There's no organization there. In Batavia, there's organization, that's why the place in Batavia doesn't have this issue. Because they are enforced to stay up on the regulations and prevent all that. Nor is there a house nearly as close as their house or the prince's house. My friend grew up down the road from there, he's the closest house to that, that place. There, it's 100 foot to a mile, there's a pretty big difference there. So I think that is where it definitely needs to start, is how can you change four foot of grade when the code was zero? But like Tony said, those blocks are there to support the building because it was lifted four feet off the ground. It's, it's gotta be controlled, or it's never gonna be controlled, and this issue's never gonna end, ever.
Thank you. Anybody else? What's the board's preference? Do you want to adjourn?
I think it's a good idea.
What about you? I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting and keep it open until our next public hearing.
Okay, any other discussions? We adjourn the public hearing, will we go until January?
We're not closing it, we're just adjourning here. We're not closing.
The public hearing, we're adjourning that our. Okay, all those in favor, same side by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry it. Carry it.
We couldn't hear when you just made a motion and decided.
We're adjourning the public hearing until the January planning board meeting.
And so you're gonna kind of like pick it up where you left off, is that what that means?
No, we should have the report from his attorney.
There's some additional information that is apparently being submitted, and we wanna have the opportunity to.
To review. Thank you.
Okay. Public face with the concerns addressed, and obviously with the information, official information that's gonna be submitted. I don't think we really, the board can really take any kind of action tonight. So. So I would like to, let's say, we have our solo officer do an compliance inspection. For a compliance inspection. Just contact you to arrange, contact you to arrange, it'll be Jean Sinclair, kind of names. Okay. So we'll get the report, take a look at it, we'll get you a copy of it. From the premises, so that you can look it over and see what it says. I haven't seen it, so I don't know what it says. And. Then I guess we'll get back together as well. In the meantime, if there's anything that you wanna submit.
Thank you for coming.
Wonderful. Great guy. Okay, okay. Yeah. We adjourn the public hearing, so check the way it's gonna be opened, you know, at the end of November. Okay, yeah, so we're good on us. Okay. Thanks for everybody, thanks everybody for your comments and your input, I appreciate it.